If you're looking at our agenda, item B on our agenda has been tabled. So there will be no discussion tonight on item B. It will not be presented. So if you're here for that, then you're welcome to stay, but it will be tabled.
I'll show my chair to Al.
Okay, and everyone who's signed in, we kind of really want me to do that, please. Councilmember Ann Snider, can you declare that we have a forum present?
We do.
Forum being present, I now declare this meeting open. I'll ask our development. Director Lonnie Waters, if you will, please do an invocation for us.
Lord, as we gather, Lord, we just like to thank you for all the blessings, the sunshine, the weather. Lord, we just thank you for all the veterans you have sent us, the ones that have defended our country and our rights. And, Lord, we ask you to bless all their families. Lord, as we go through this meeting, just give us, guide us, and direction to do what's right. These favored blessings, we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen. Councilmember Sonny Brockler, would you please sign a pledge of allegiance, please, sir?
A pledge of allegiance to the Father, to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit. And to the Republic, the love of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Counsel, you have the agenda that has been mailed out two years. I'll entertain a motion at this time, but we adopt the agenda as presented.
So moved.
And secondly, have a motion and a second. Any discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries now, Mr. Lawrence. Under new business, I may, as a public hearing, to request an annex into the city parcel J810052.001, consisting of 3.85 acres. And I'm now going to open the public hearing for that item. This will be a rezon from county highway business to C2 general commercial. Property is located at the intersection of Noah Drive and West Church Street in Jasper, Georgia. And I will ask our development. Director Lonnie Waters, if you will, please to bring this to us.
Mayor, counsel, the staff recommendation for this applicant is based on the analysis of the application using the standards and criteria found in section 94-246 of the zoning ordinance. Staff recommends to approve the request of the annexation into the city of Jasper and rezon the property from county highway business to C2 general commercial. Should the mayor and council approve the annexation request, it is expected that the following minimum standards are demonstrated and met as requested by staff during the appropriate approval process. If the current proposal does not meet the minimum standards, it is understood that the development plans will be altered to come into compliance. And the owner of the property and the gentleman that wants to build the business is here tonight for any questions.
Thank you. Let me first ask if there's a member of our audience that wants to speak to this specific request? Please do so now. If not, then I will ask the owner to speak to that.
I don't want you on this side.
So Stephen, what are you going to do with this property, buddy?
Well, we just got it for sale commercially, or my daddy does that, so he wouldn't be here if not.
Okay.
And just for future commercial growth.
Any further comments from anyone in the audience? I now declare that particular meeting closed for the public hearing part of it. Item B is a public hearing to rezon parcel 030C001 and 030B061.001, consisting of 50.33 acres from RA and R1 to a planned unit development. This item, I'm going to open up a public hearing for that item. And at this point, I would ask if there's anyone in the audience?
That's tabled.
I know it has. It has been tabled, okay? Now, that means that the city cannot speak to that, and that also means that the owners cannot speak to that. That does not mean that anyone in the audience that's here cannot listen. We can listen to you. So if there's anyone that wants to speak to that now, this will be tabled until our next meeting.
And Mr. Mayor, if I could, just to make sure that everyone understands the procedural elements of all this, when Lonnie and his team receives an application for annexation or rezonings, there's a procedural requirement in accordance with the Zoning Procedures Act, which our zoning ordinance requires. And so we have to accept these applications in, and then we have a series of required advertisements to be in compliance with the proper public process. So because of the fact that you'll see things in the paper, or you'll see those yellow signs throughout the community, we have an obligation as a jurisdiction to go through the process. Now, after Tuesday evening's planning and zoning public hearing, the applicant had expressed to Lonnie and staff that they had listened to the public, and they had noted the concerns, and what they wanted to do was request this matter to be tabled so that they could go back to their drawing board, so to speak, and make certain revisions and accommodations in accordance with trying to achieve a good product for the community. So as the mayor's indicated, we are not afforded the chance to speak on the matter tonight because we do not have that new information because he has tabled it to allow them to revisit. However, procedurally, technically, it is a public hearing as advertised. So anyone who is here to make comment on that particular matter may do so. However, please be mindful that both the applicant and the city do not have anything to discuss, because that's what tabling is. But we have to open the public hearing, accept any public, and then we'll close and move on.
But I will ask Lonnie if you have anything to say about this particular tabling.
The only thing that I can say is, this morning, the developer, the landowner, did contact us and told us that they did hear what the community said, and they were going back to the drawing board, just like Brandon had said. And they're going to try to find a project that will be a good neighbor and assist the community, something that they would appreciate and be happy with. So they requested to table this for at least 30 days.
Thank you, Lonnie. And we will now focus that public hearing. The next item, under item C, is a public hearing to request annexation to the city of Jasper parcel 029B061, consisting of 17.28 acres, and rezon from county RR2 residential. This property is located off of Jeanette Drive in Jasper, Georgia. And I'm now going to open the public hearing on that particular parcel, and ask Lonnie Waters to bring that to our council.
Okay, we received an application for rezoning and annexation on this tract of land. The applicant was aware of the moratorium. We explained all the details of the moratorium, and it was anybody's right to apply. So we went ahead and took his application. And staff recommendation is based on the analysis of the application using the standards and criteria found in section 94-246 of the zoning ordinance. Staff recommends the approval with conditions of the request to annex and rezon the property from county RR to R2 single-family attached. It is expected that the applicant will comply with the following conditions. Should mayor and council approve the annexation and rezoning request, it is expected that the following minimum standards are demonstrated and met as requested by staff during the appropriate approval process. If the current proposal does not meet these minimum standards, it is understood that the development plans will be altered to come into compliance. The developer or applicant that wants to apply for this annexation and rezoning is here along with a couple of the owners.
Okay, would those who represent this particular annexation request step forward at this time?
Good evening, I'm John Lloyd, Lloyd Development Services.
Welcome, Mr. Lloyd, from the city of Jasper.
Thank you for having me. So I know that you have a copy of the site plan and analysis from your staff of what our application entails. This project in particular is adjacent to the city in multiple locations, mainly properties that are zoned in one, as well as a handful of properties that are zoned to a lower-density ag designation. We've put together a site plan that accounts for that, areas that are adjacent to some of the lower-density ag land. We've installed, or I guess, land plants in place. We've met with Mr. Waters and discussed access points and things of that nature. And so that's the plan that you have before you. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, so at this point in time, I will ask anyone in the audience if they will speak either for or against this particular zoning request. And if not, then council, I would, at this point, ask you if you have any questions for this applicant. You understand the conditions and are happy with the conditions?
I do.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, at this point, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, question procedurally, do we need to close the public hearing?
I think, ma'am, Mr. Mayor, and for the public, what we do is, part of the advertisement is, there's a public hearing between, before planning and zoning, mayor and council, and then there's the discussion on Monday, October 4th, which is not a public hearing. So if there's any questions that the council may have of the applicant that can do so, take it into consideration, and then the final consideration and approval will be held on Monday. So no decision on any of these matters are held tonight. So what happens is, the process is, two public hearings, and then the next Monday is the regular meeting where the final decision can be made.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. So at this point, thank you, sir, and we will close this public hearing. Item B is a public hearing of variance requests on existing lots that are currently zoned R3, also JA12056.008, JA12056.012, JA12056.015, JA12056.017, JA12056.007, and one more, JA12056.019, located off of West Sellers and Middle Springs Road. So I'll ask Lonnie Waters to bring this to council for this public hearing, and I'll open the public hearing on that item.
Okay, mayor and council, the gentleman that filled out the application for this variance did so about a year ago, or maybe a little longer. There was some confusion on some paperwork and things, so he tabled it or withdrew it, and then he's came back, and he's asking for this variance on apartments on West Southern. So in his paperwork, staff has analyzed it, and based on that, analysis of the application using the standards and criteria found in section 94-210 of the zoning ordinance, staff recommends approval of the request of the variance on the current existing lots. If mayor and council should approve this request to grant the variance for each lot, then the survey could essentially finalize the flats, and the owners could move forward in recording. Now, the gentleman's here, Ron is here, and he can explain this variance process of what they're trying to do much better than I can. So he's here if you'd like to hear his discussion.
Please don't call. Thanks for having me, Ron Brockler, speaking freely. Basically, we brought this property, my investors bought the majority of the property a couple of years ago, but during heavy diligence, our attorney also found some things that were issues in the process, and even the old owner actually recorded a new flat two weeks before we closed. And so we accepted the issues, and we're with Lonnie and his team trying to solve those. We came up with, our solution is to basically get the variance and replat the lots from a condo to a townhome. And right now, it's 100% investor-owned. So our goal is to be able to get rid of the condo, and then allow owner-occupied people to buy it after that. So once we get rid of that, we will get rid of the 30% cap and be able to do that. So hopefully, the goal is to transition that from full rental to whole plates, and down the road to owner-occupied.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone in the audience that wants to speak to this variance on this piece of property? If not, council, any questions by council on this? Pretty straightforward. If not, thank you, sir.
Appreciate that.
And we will declare that public hearing closed. Item B is a conceptual site plan approval. Lonnie, I want to ask you to bring this to us again.
Okay, if you remember, back in the spring, there were a gentleman that came in to house and property rezoned at R3. They were going to do 81 units of residential. That was approved. The development never did happen, and so they did not close on the property, they did not build the units. But this property was still zoned R3 because it had passed planning and zoning and council. So a developer has purchased the property, and he has come forward with a conceptual drawing there of 81 units instead of 82. And he is wanting to move forward on this. There is no annexation, there is no rezoning, and it's already in place. And he just wants permission to approve his drawing and conception plan to build these housing units.
Counsel, we entertain a motion at this time to approve.
Oh, pardon, sorry.
This is not a public hearing.
Okay.
So I entertain a motion to approve the conceptual site plan on this piece of property that we have already approved, rezoned.
Motion to approve as presented for discussion.
Second. Motion in a second to approve as presented for discussion, and council, I'll entertain your discussion at this time.
How many units is it, Lonnie?
81.
No, it was the original approval.
82, these two. And maybe it don't be townhome.
And how many entrances are there to the property?
As of right now, in the discussion, there's two, and there's possibly a ability of three.
Like a minimal of two.
Like a minimal of two.
Has that made our current ordinances for just our units? Two entrances does. Because I know in the original approval, that was discussed.
Yes, it was.
And there was only one entrance at that time.
But there will be, definitely be two entrances.
Mr. Davis, if you would, sir, expand upon the explanation that was given from Mr. Waters. I think it's important for the public to understand the entire timeline factually of when this was approved for R3, that another individual has now purchased the property. If you just want us to read that and what that looks like.
Yes, so what happens is, everyone who owns property has a particular zoning classification designation, basically what you can do with your property. There was an entity that had approached the city last year about rezoning an eight-acre section of a larger tract to R3 to do senior living. Based upon our zoning, they requested the R3. So the R3 is a zoning classification that it was zoned to. Now, what happens is, between the time that that person deciding not to build, the zoning goes with the land. So the land is already zoned R3. So if someone else purchases the property, they have the vested right in the zoning that had already been approved last year. Now, what this is, is an update that the staff advises the applicants, that even though they purchase this property, they still have to submit a plan of what they want to do, because it still has to be within the confines of what is allowable based on that zoning classification. So we are not having a public hearing on changing any sort of land use or zoning or density, which is the intensity of the use of the land, but because there was a person who bought the property, rezoned it, then they sold it, someone purchased the property, said, "Well, what can I do with it in its existing state?" And this is the byproduct of. So the person who purchases the property could have asked to rezon to something else, or they can use that property based upon the zoning designation it already is, which is the R3. So the analysis that you all receive for any zoning request or annexation request is not done for this. It's a conceptual site plan approval. What that means is, through the development process, Lonnie and his team will ensure that the development, as it occurs, meets the standards of access points, setbacks, making sure that the density is exactly what it is, land disturbance permits. So this is kind of an update of staff to council, because if you have a recollection of what had been approved last year, I believe it was a proposed three-story unit, one restricted, it would be improper or not a best practice to afford you all the chance, and the public a chance, to have this explanation that by right, the property is currently zoned R3, so the use thereof is going to be used as an R3 eligible something.
Thank you, sir. Well done. Counsel, I have a motion in a second to approve for discussion. Can we move that to approval?
Is it accurate to say that if ownership of the property had not changed, council would have still approved the plan previously that had already been approved? We would not be having this approval process today, correct?
If the original owner who had petitioned the city for the rezon, if they had decided to move forward with their project that was defined in the rezoning, that would not come back to y'all.
Correct.
That person would have pulled permits for land disturbance, and then pulled building permits, and moved forward.
So the only reason this is occurring is, two entities privately decided to sell the property, a new plan has come before council, and so now the plan is being considered.
Correct.
Thank you.
The only other variable, I guess, is that our zoning ordinance has changed since that original approval, so.
Any further discussion, counsel?
Lonnie, you have anything to add to that?
No, I really don't. I mean, it's been explained very, very good. So, I mean, the property's zoned.
Right.
The gentleman wants to build, and so if this site plan is approved, he can move forward with his construction.
Okay.
After permitting.
Right. And we've addressed all street parking and all aspects of the plan?
Yes, we have.
Thank you.
Counsel, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the conceptual site plan.
We already have a motion in.
We already got a motion in.
I need to approve. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. And at this point, that motion carries. Item G is consideration of approval of a contract with Universal Concepts for Main Street Lights. And I can't tell you that, how many times that we've had discussions about lighting downtown over the years, and quite some number of times since I've been mayor for the last 20 months. So what I've asked is, that if there's any way to go back to the people that actually put these lights up, and determine if we could have a maintenance contract with them that would allow us to do other things also, and as a part of that process, then we can also take our banners that we have and change those out at Christmas time, or other events that we might decide to do in the future. So at this point, I want to bring this before council for full disclosure, and I'll entertain a motion that we approve a not-to-exceed of $9,500 for a maintenance contract that will allow us to have each one of these lights checked, and also that would include the cost of our Christmas banner.
Motion to table based upon light availability. At this point, I have some questions.
I would ask respectfully, sir, that before you do that, I want to advise you that to get those things downtown, I'm going to have to, it's a question of time, as far as the Christmas banners go. They have to be ordered, they have to be processed, and then they have to be put up. So if we do this table, can we table this until Monday night, and that will allow you to?
Absolutely.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to table. We have a motion available on the, to table until Monday night's meeting.
In a second.
In a second. Any further discussion by council?
I have a couple of questions. The funding, is that, obviously, it's not a budgeted item, but is it coming from hotel motel tax or what?
It is. Any further questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same.
Mayor, I think, do we need to drop back the item half?
We've got that.
Your, the agenda package is put together backwards.
Yeah, it is.
Universal Concepts was behind the other item.
So we'll go ahead and say, all in favor, please say aye, and that's been done. Any opposed? Then we will table that until Monday night at our regular. The next item is consideration of modified IGA between the city of Jasper and Stevens County regarding the Highway 136 water line project. And I'm going to ask our director of water, wastewater, David Hall, if you will bring that to us.
Evening, mayor, council. Tonight, I'd like to run it for you to, we're running a little bit short on help right now, and we'd like to propose to go along with a proposal that, quote, that the county had got to finish the Highway 136 project, to install an eight-inch C900 pipe with a local contractor at a total price of $36,000, which will allow us to finish our portion of the pipe to be laid on Highway 136, which we agreed the county was going to lay 4,000 feet. And myself and Brandon met with them on various occasions, and I think Dr. Brockler, I think the mayor may have been present at some of those meetings too, but we agreed to do half of the project. And we've paid our half as far as all the materials, and now to finish up our part as far as installation of the pipe, we'd like 2,400 feet. So at that price of the 2,400 feet, there'd be a total cost of $36,000 for us to be able to pull in a contractor to finish our portion of the pipe. We just don't have the labor right now to complete this. And I'd like to ask you all to allow us to have And I'd like to ask for y'all to allow us to have the contractor that the county's gonna have finish their, they only like about four hundred feet on their part, and they're gonna have the same contractor finish their portion also.
Do you have to know what their remaining cost would be?
No, four hundred.
Four hundred times fifteen.
Four hundred times fifteen, yeah.
And David, that's within what we budgeted to have that.
Yes, my honor.
It's actually lower than what we budgeted. We budgeted a hundred fifty thousand, I believe.
Yes, sir.
And then, and so, this will put us up to about a hundred and twenty-one thousand total.
So, we're paying more than the fifty percent by ten or fifteen thousand?
We have more than fifty percent to do.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I believe we agreed to pay fifty-fifty on the project.
We did.
Okay.
But, they have done more linear footage than we have done.
So, the point of my question is, how much above the fifty percent mark for the total project will this put us?
This puts us at fifty percent, sir. It goes, it was eight thousand total feet.
Okay.
They done with the four hundred, they'll be doing four thousand feet, and we'll be doing, we've done sixteen hundred feet, we're gonna pay for an additional, if y'all approve, twenty-four hundred feet, which will get us to four thousand also, for the total of eight thousand, and that will be equal amongst, you know, the both of us, that will allow us to get that three hundred thousand gallons a day that y'all worked out with the county.
Okay. So, we're still at fifty percent?
Yes.
And they're still at fifty percent?
Yes, sir. Did y'all approve? Yes.
And, and if I could, Mr. Mayor and Council, what, just to, just to not put Dave completely on the hot seat, I will tell y'all, we had examined originally doing this outsourcing anyway. It was, at the time, more to our advantage to just do it in-house as the county. I think the county's experiencing some of the same things. The unfortunate part for us is, our crew basically dipped out on us after sixteen hundred, and that's capitalism. They get offered money that we cannot afford to do. We did examine putting kind of a ten-nine-nine employees. Unfortunately, the crews that we had tried to ham up, we cannot afford to pay what the private sector paid. It is fortunate that the county was able to solicit and receive a favorable bid, and quite candidly, the county was prepared just to go ahead and do their four hundred to meet their obligatory linear fee. The Mayor, David, had kind of conversed with the contractor, and they basically have an opportunity to say, "We'll honor those same prices at that same bid just to continue on." So, in essence, what we're doing is, we're saying, "Look, we can't ten-nine-nine it, we can't hire somebody," although, I'm gonna go ahead on my soapbox again and say that y'all done a great job in adjusting the salaries of employees, because once again, we have defined benefits, we have insurance, and we have a minimum thirteen dollars an hour. We're paying these people fifteen an hour. So, in essence, the twenty-plus thousand dollars a year per employee that the city has to pay for benefits, coupled with the thirty-plus thousand that it works out in hours, is fifty thousand. Well, if you don't care about benefits, defined benefits, retirement, insurance, you go make fifty thousand in the private sector, that's free and clear money in your pocket, but from an operational budgetary perspective, we have these other requirements that we have to do. So, the outsourcing, unfortunately, at this point, is our best bet to complete the project, and quite candidly, David and even Adam, crew from Public Works, is gonna have to probably rely more on these contractual-type situations. Monday evening, you all will be hearing about the sidewalk project that came into bid, and we just have to take our medicine where we can until we can kind of get over this lull with some labor shortage. So, sorry to interject, but just wanted.
So, I'm fine with fifty-fifty, that's what we agreed on. I wanted to make sure that the county wasn't somehow trying to make it fifty-five, forty-five. Not, I mean, this is a relatively new type of project that we've been working on and trying to collaborate with the county. I also think things should go through a committee that are founded in committee, and I was a little bit unaware that we had gotten into this position, and, and so, that's why the question's in this forum, because I wasn't given opportunity to question prior. And, but the main thing is, I want to make sure that we finish the project and that we do it as we agreed upon in this room with both the county and the city present at the fifty-fifty mark, so.
Good questions.
Yeah, and we thought that we would be able to obtain some employees, but it wasn't so much.
Well, it's been a tough time for, I mean, a lot of people don't have employees right now.
A lot of, a lot of them didn't meet the requirements, it wasn't so much, they didn't want to come to work to see, is that some of the other requirements, for criminals and drug history and stuff like that, still didn't meet the requirements even though, you know, I mean, we've had multiple, Stacy and Beverly can attest to this, we've had multiple, you know, applicants, you know, that come for the pay, but they didn't meet other requirements, you know, through the municipality that is required, that private sector can hire.
And again, we don't want to compromise the cultural changes we're trying to implement at all, so I think it would be in you and Stacy for that. Now, Dave, tell us a little about the contract you got. Have you seen their work before?
Yes.
Very happy with it.
Very happy. They've done work for the city, and they've done work for the county, and they have a open contract with the city to do the hospital project.
If I could interject something here, the amount that we're asking for is above the twenty-five thousand that we usually require in our purchasing policy that go up for bid. If the, I pulled the contract that we had with the county, and it states that they are responsible for oversight of the project, they are responsible for the bidding, for everything. So, I felt comfortable that we were not violating any of our purchasing policies because there is a bid, and we're simply piggybacking off of the county.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further discussion by Counsel? This time, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So.
Second. Have a motion in a second to approve. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. And the motion carries.
And ultimately, Mr. Mayor and Council, y'all, y'all are the ones, staff cannot usurp any sort of policy, but y'all make it, so y'all can change them. So, that's exactly what Beverly was trying to say, is so, in the future, if we bring y'all something that may seem a little odd about, well, you technically were then this, within that, what we're trying to do is say, you all are the only body that can kind of usurp your own policy that you made, so if we go to an audit and the auditor say, "Well, why don't you take this out, or why don't you do this," if it has been formally approved, even if it meets a prior approval, Beverly can hand down the minutes and say, "Here you go." So, just, I won't be here to say that again, so I wanted to use the opportunity just to, just to say it.
Thank you.
So, thank y'all.
And Counsel? At this point, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to go into executive session, and so, I will have to ask you to all leave the room. We have no other items coming back after that, so, so, thank you all.
So, do you have any more?
I'd entertain a motion to, in a second. Counsel, at this point, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn executive session.
So.
In a second, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're back. Counsel, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So.
Second.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourn.